Championships, track and field competition was held recently in Brockville, Ontario. Several area athletes competed at this three-day meet. St. Mike's High School student JT Hunt, what's JT stand for?
Jerry Tyrone.
Jerry Tyrone, okay. Was the only Niagara Falls athlete to win a medal, and not just a medal, he won a gold medal at the senior boys' high jump, and this was his first OFSA Track and Field Meet competing as a senior. He left 1.98 meters, so approximately, what, six foot?
Approximately? Six foot five.
Six foot five. Yeah, there you go, and he peers my head with a hat on? Wow. Last year, he placed second in the junior boys' championship, so obviously, he's definitely progressing. The St. Mike's Catholic High School athlete has a new goal of 2.2 meters for next year. JT is coached by Ryan Dudley, the teacher at St. Mike's. And just, now, 2.2 meters, for those of us that are still in the Imperial system, so what are we talking, JT? How high is that? That's really tall. What's your arm? Show me your hand.
It's weak.
Okay. Picture this. Look at this. Look at this.
That's bulleled.
That's bulleled. Exactly. So JT, on behalf of members of city council, and we're very, very proud, and we're glad that it was brought to our attention, you've made us very, very proud. We know that you're not finished. We know that you're going to be breaking more records and representing Niagara Falls well, so on behalf of city, whoa, look at that, on behalf of city council, I want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
We've got the certificate, and a small token of our appreciation for your award, and big hand for, and we're going to... I agree this week. You're left, yeah, yeah. One more with him showing his hand, the height. Show him the height.
Yeah, this one.
Yeah, the one that you did already this year, so show.
About six inches above your head.
Awesome. JT, congratulations.
Your worship, I guess the only thing I wanted to mention is our congratulations to JT as well from the St. Michael's School community. I mean, he makes us very proud, and being our very first OFSA gold medal winner, very proud of your worship.
Awesome. Well done. Next up, we have Robin Crandall. Robin, come on down and join us. And let me read, congratulations, Monica. And read a little bit about Robin as well before we give her her award. Now, Robin competed in Kingston from May 31st to June 2nd for the Provincial Spring Games, and she brought home not just one, but three gold medals and a silver medal, and so, yeah, well, we can, let's go through those for that. Now, Robin won the 50-meter butterfly, she received gold, also the 200-meter freestyle, she won gold, and the 50-meter freestyle, she won gold. Then the 200-meter individual medley, she won one silver. In 2011, city council recognized Robin for winning two gold medals and one silver at the Special Olympic World Games held in Athens, Greece. Robin, she's also been recognized with the Doug Austin Award at the city's 2010 Volunteer Recognition Evening Awards at Club Italia. Robin continues to train for future swim events. She trains at the McBain Community Center with a combination of swimming, weight training, and cardiovascular exercise. We're very, very proud of Robin. Congratulations. So Robin, please, on behalf of your city council and your proud residents of Niagara Falls, receive this small certificate and award just to recognize how proud we are of what you've done.
Thank you so much.
Okay, congratulations. Do you want, why don't you see, do you want to see, do you want to do a picture and then say a few words?
I couldn't have done this without my coach. He was my coach for eight years, and he just retired this year, just before the provincials.
What's his name?
George Penman.
George Penman, okay. Well, we're very, very proud of what you've done in representing Niagara Falls so well, three gold medals and a silver, and we're sure we're going to see your back with some more medals.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Robin. Yeah, our clerk points out that it's the third time that we've recognized Robin, so congratulations. I'm sure you're going to become a household name around council chambers, as will JT. We're sure we're going to hear you, see you back here, and show us those crazy heights. I don't know how you're doing it, you've got to have springs in those feet of yours. Good work. A watch for the third time? Well, you bring that motion forward, councillor. All right. Now, we're moving on to planning matters. We're having a public meeting for AM 2011 002, and I would ask the city clerk to introduce this next item.
Your worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning bylaw for proposed changes to parking requirements in the Clifton Hill/Fallsview tourist areas. Notice was given by First Class Mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, May 25th, 2012. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the official plan and/or zoning bylaw amendment or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I now ask Mr. Hrlavich, our director of planning, to explain the purpose and reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, your worship. This application involves a city-initiated official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment that affects the lands within the core tourist area, which involves all of the, what we call the Clifton Hill District and the Fallsview District. These are outlined in blue on the map in front of you, so basically, from 420 Falls Avenue all the way down to Livingston in the south, from Queen Victoria Park on the east, to the Hydro corridor along Allendale Avenue on the west. The purpose of the official plan amendment is to introduce some site-specific policies that would allow for the city to establish different parking standards for specific uses in the tourist area. It would also allow the city to establish an area for parking exemption. It would also introduce policies that would allow the development community to use three different sets of parking requirements for the tourist area, as well as the option to apply to their own site-specific zone standards, and it would clarify how those parking requirements are to be applied. In addition to that official plan amendment, then we're going to implement that through our zoning amendment, and that would be to introduce new parking provisions that would decrease the parking requirements in that tourist area for restaurants, retail stores, museums, and theaters. The parking requirements would, however, increase for hotel rooms, but this is offset by the fact that we would eliminate the requirements for ancillary uses within hotels, restaurants, retail stores, et cetera. Hotels and motels that use the new standards would have the option of substituting one bus parking space for every 20 car parking spaces to a maximum of two bus parking spaces. Staff are also recommending a minimum dimension for bus parking spaces. The theaters would also have the option of substituting one bus parking space for 20 car parking spaces to a maximum of one bus substitution. And we've also, in this report, considered whether to extend the current parking exemption that exists at Fair and Stanley Avenue to the entire Victoria Centre BIA and the entire Fallsview BIA. A number of neighborhood open houses were held. The most recent one, there were still some questions as to why we wouldn't increase the number of bus substitutions to five. They also wanted to be able to submit their own parking demand studies. In reviewing these proposed changes for council, we found that the proposal is consistent with the provincial policy statement and growth plan. The impetus for this work really comes out of our official plan. Our tourist commercial policy provides that the city will review the parking requirements as they apply to the central district. The city undertook a study in 2009, I think this was around a $70,000 study, and so, therefore, it was quite comprehensive, as we undertook surveys of tourists in the entire tourist core. The results of that study represent the most current and accurate calculation of need versus demand. The proposed official plan policies would allow for the establishment of different parking requirements for the Clifton Hill and Fallsview tourist districts as opposed to the balance of the city, and those are based on that 2009 study. The property owners would have the option of using either the current 79-200 standards during the public meeting process. Some people said that they would prefer to use that. Some hoteliers, the Hilton, for example, is already using the requirements that were proposed through the 2009 parking study. And then, there are a number of sites throughout the tourist area that already have site-specific zoning for parking requirements. And then, last but not least, they would have the opportunity to apply for their own standards. Business owners would have, the policies would provide that business owners have the option of picking one of those three standards, but they can't combine or cherry-pick, you know, this standard from that standard. They were meant to work in unison by the various options. There was a recommendation by the consultant in the 2009 study that said that any property owner not be allowed to do a further parking demand study. While we considered this, we saw this as being contrary to the landowner's right to apply for zoning amendment under the Planning Act, so we haven't incorporated a policy to that effect. The proposed policies also allow the city to pass bylaws that would exempt certain areas of the city from requiring parking that is within the tourist core. The review of parking provided by the tourist commercial uses in existing buildings along Victoria Avenue was undertaken, and it was found that the hotels and motels along that stretch already provide parking either onsite or at approved off-site locations. What we found was the other uses, the restaurants, the drugstores, the liquor stores, may have insufficient parking and do not provide the parking to meet the zone requirements, and they're considered legal non-conforming in that regard. It's reasonable to consider extending the parking exemption that exists at Stanley and Ferry to all of those uses along Victoria Avenue, since most of them don't meet that parking standard. When reviewing the Fallsview District, we discovered that the majority of the Fallsview District has redeveloped in the last 10 to 15 years in accordance with the bylaw 79-200 standards. Therefore, there's no technical justification to support this requested exemption by the BIA. The proposed changes, we feel, are in keeping with the official plan requirements, or it's intent to provide efficient, safe, functioning transportation system to meet the needs of the traveling public and integrate with the community. With respect to the zoning bylaw, the landowners would have four options. I mentioned those upfront. The first option would be to use the existing standards in the current 79-200 bylaw. The second option would be to use the standards established by the 2009 parking study. The third option is the site-specific bylaws that any property may have already received. And the fourth option, as I mentioned, is to allow anyone to apply for their own parking standards, but they have to provide a parking demand analysis to support their request. Landowners would not have the ability to blend those requirements. So in essence, the parking standards that would appear in our zoning bylaw that is on our website, available throughout our municipal offices, option one are basically the 79-200 standards. Option two are the standards that are proposed from that 2009 study. I'm going to skip down to about halfway through the chart. You can see ancillary, retail, to hotel. Option one would still require one space for 25 square meters of floor area. Option two, no parking would be required. And as we go down, looking at those various lists for museum, restaurant, retail, tattoo, et cetera, all of those parking spaces requirements go down under option two. However, the requirements do go up for motels and hotels, comparing option two against option one. But in order to offset the fact that a hotel and motel would have to provide additional spaces for their rooms, we've offset that by not requiring seats less than 300 in a restaurant. They would not have to provide any parking spaces. Restaurants in hotels that are greater than 300 seats would be exempt for the first 300, and then they'd have to provide one parking space for every 15 seats, about 300. The difference between a 300-seat restaurant and lower and a 300-seat restaurant and above is really seen as that the larger restaurants become destinations in and of themselves. And so, not only do we have the people who are staying in the hotels using the restaurants, we have people within our own community as well as the surrounding communities who would come to Niagara Falls and use those restaurants. The Kegs, for instance, is a brand-name restaurant that draws people, day trippers who come to Niagara Falls, wouldn't be staying at a hotel to go to that restaurant. Again, most of the uses that were identified in the 2009 parking study require less parking than currently required. I mentioned the hotels and motels would be higher, but this is offset by a reduction in the parking for restaurants, retail space, meeting space in those hotels. What we did find, though, is that option two really only benefits the very large hotels that have a high amount of ancillary uses, a large number of meeting rooms, a large amount of restaurant space, et cetera. And so, that's where we introduced the bus provisions. So if you're using option number two, then the buses, the reason to have two buses would be to offset any additional requirements. Beyond those hotels which would be above 200 rooms, most of those hotels have large meeting space and so on, which compensates. So therefore, that's the reason behind the bus parking. Well, there it is again. So basically, so hoteliers who want to use the new standards were saying they would be compensated by the exemptions for ancillary space. Those who use the new standards could then compensate further by providing one bus parking substitution for 20 parking spaces up to two buses. Several stakeholders asked why it couldn't be five. Again, I've explained that, and that ultimately, the fewer parking spaces that we provide for those hotels, the greater we're going to create a parking shortage, particularly during the summer peak demand period. The stakeholders also requested one bus parking substitution for theaters and cinemas, since most of the tour buses come and deliver to visitors for short durations. This was viewed as an acceptable request. We're also introducing provisions to specify how large those bus parking spaces would be, so 3.75 meters by 15 meters with a 15-meter maneuvering aisle. There's an importance that we're going to have a bus parking space if we think it's going to fit in the same space as a car. We hadn't included this in our public notice, but it's fairly minor, since we already had advertised that we would be introducing bus requirements, so we don't believe that any additional notice is needed. I spoke a little bit to the parking exemption, so the request was, at the last time this traffic, our parking report was here, that all of the Victoria Centre BIA be included. As I said, we looked at the uses along Victoria Avenue, the majority of those businesses, the restaurants, the retail stores, et cetera, do not have parking onsite. We feel that the parking for just the Victoria Avenue area makes sense. We don't support the request for the Fallsview, as I've explained, they developed under the 79-200 standards in the last 10 to 15 years. There are exemptions that were introduced in 1981. Those same uses would be the uses that would be exempt, so we're just making sure that that's clear to everyone. So hotels, for instance, are not exempt, even in the exempt areas. The city's transportation department, I think you need to know this, as council, do not support these parking exemptions. We actually have a policy that says if you can't meet the parking requirements, you should actually be paying the city cash in lieu of parking. That money goes into a kitty and is to provide for municipal parking lots and upgrades at later dates. So that's just some background behind their non-support. As I said, the parking exemption was introduced in 1981. It was introduced as an attempt to encourage reinvestment and also to, was applicable to areas where there are already municipal parking lots. Again, I've already mentioned Fallsview, there's already been a significant amount of reinvestment. The city, as I said, we already looked at Victoria Avenue, and therefore, we're not supporting exemptions beyond those I've already outlined. As I mentioned, the parking demand studies, the 2009 study was done because the business operators were complaining that it was costly and time-consuming for them to do parking demand studies every time they wanted a zoning change. So the city undertook this $70,000 study to basically reexamine our parking spaces, determine at the end of that study that our standards were a little high. We've made the adjustments and pointed those out as option two. And while the consultant feels that we shouldn't reexamine that through site-specific amendments, we feel that that might be contrary to the Planning Act, so we can't support that consultant's recommendation, but council is going to have to weigh that on a site-by-site basis. So should they get a request to reduce the parking requirement for tattoo parlors even further from where we've lowered it, you would have to review that on a case-by-case basis as to whether or not that's warranted, whether it's going to create demand for parking elsewhere if it can't be met on-site. So in conclusion, we feel that the official plan amendments allow the city to introduce the alternative parking ratios that we're proposing. The zoning that proposes the new parking ratios are consistent with the provincial policies. They're keeping with the tourist commercial policies of the city. The parking study changes more accurately reflect the actual parking demand. Business owners have the option of using several choices, so it gives them much more flexibility. The parking demand studies can be submitted and reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and the parking exemption is, we're still recommending that it apply only to this area of Victoria Avenue. So Victoria Avenue from where Four Brothers Restaurant is, basically in the bottom left, following along Ellen Avenue and extending up to the businesses up front on the Victoria Avenue at the 420, or what's now Falls Avenue, there's a large municipal parking lot behind there. Before I introduce the recommendation, there may be a request here to defer this decision, and my recommendation would be that council actually proceed with these amendments to the official plan and zoning tonight. If there's requests for deferral, I would suggest that council actually refer that back to staff to examine that. We have a number of business operators, and I've heard from some of the councillors around the table who represent those business operators, asking, when are these new standards coming in? They've been holding off building their new businesses, hoping for these new standards. They're lower standards, there are incentives for them, and so I would encourage council to proceed with the recommendation tonight. That recommendation is to approve the official plan and zoning amendments to implement the alternative parking requirements in the Clifton Hill and Fallsview tourist districts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hrlavich. Are there any questions of council from Mr. Hrlavich on this parking study? Councillor Thompson?
Just, councillor Ryan Oni isn't here tonight, and I think she sent me an email regarding what happens when you have overregulation and underregulation, and I think this is an indication of what can happen when you don't worry about regulation. We've got to take some notice of this situation.
Is that how it is now or how it's going to be?
We ought to take something from India. Walking traffic, car traffic, bus traffic.
I haven't seen one accident yet. You don't need traffic lights either.
Anyway, a little humor.
Yeah, that's good. Lighten up the...
Three years of waiting for this to happen, and I hope it is going to be a deferral.
Is, or isn't?
Isn't.
Okay. All right, are there any other comments of council? Yes, councillor Gates?
Yeah, I just got a question to Transportation Services. It was said that they're not in favor of this, and maybe they could stand up and express what their concerns are on why you're not in favor of it.
Thank you, through the mayor. Our concern with any type of exemption of parking, it's not that we're not in favor of what's going forward tonight, it's really the exemptions. The parking operation today as it exists is a user-paid type of parking, and it has limited funds available to it. At some point in the future, if you exempt parking, there's going to be parking needs, and our concern is really from a taxpayer perspective, is that at some point, it's going to fall, we see it falling on the taxpayers to put up parking lots. And so, that's our concern with exemptions. It may not happen immediately, but somewhere down the road, it's going to happen, and so that was our concern. As far as the bylaws concerned, you know, we're in favor of the changes. We went through a lot of work to make the changes, and the intent of not having the parking demand studies was to try and speed up the process that takes a long time, because for a developer to put in a demand study, they would have to wait until it's done, they have to do it at a specific time of year, and the whole idea of this study was to recognize changes in this community, and this bylaw addresses those changes.
Okay. Councillor, you good with that? Okay. Councillor Carrion?
Just to follow up on councillor Gates' question, wouldn't you look at that as an opportunity for the city to make money? Wouldn't there be an opportunity for us if there needed to be parking lots, for us, they'd all be paid parking lots? And since we have the new WEGO system starting, wouldn't there be an opportunity for the city to be able to put parking...
was to recognize changes in this community, and this bylaw addresses those changes.
Okay. Counselor, you good with that? Okay. Counselor Carrion?
Just to follow up on Counselor Gates' question, wouldn't you look at that as an opportunity for the city to make money? Wouldn't there be an opportunity for us if there needed to be parking lots, for us, they'd all be paid parking lots? And since we have the new Wego system starting, wouldn't there be an opportunity for the city to be able to put parking lots on the system, charge for the parking, and make money for the taxpayers rather than looking at it as losing money?
I guess with respect to the specific areas, because they're so seasonal, it's difficult to justify putting up a parking lot, and that's why it hasn't been done to date, is that because of the seasonality of that area, the lot itself could be sitting, you know, fairly empty during the off-peak, and I think, you know, that's one of the reasons.
The other reason it hasn't been done up to date is because there's no convenient transportation system to link it. So once we get the Wego system in place, it may be economically feasible to put parking lots, make money on them, and bus people in and out and around, on cheaper pieces of land rather than in the prime tourist area.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Well, you know, business people that develop properties certainly are going to develop a property and not have access through parking for their business. So it's either going to happen through the individual starting that business, or the private sector steps up and puts in private parking lots as an opportunity for a business. It's happening everywhere. I've been listening to this parking issue for the last 30-some-odd years. We started the cash in lieu to penalize people from development, to pay for parking into a fund to develop parking lots. How much have we collected in the last 30-some-odd years in cash and lieu? Does anybody have that figure?
Through the chair, I don't have that readily available, but I believe it's in the nature, or in the area of about $300,000 to $400,000.
Yeah, and what have we done with that?
We've reconstructed lots, and we've done improvement to lots. We've acquired a couple lots over that time period, since I've been here, and it was the last 24 years.
Anyway, the private sector steps up and puts these, if you look at the parking in the area on Clifton Hill, the Oaks property specifically, you go by there in a busy weekend, there's huge parking area there with few cars on it in most cases. There's really ample parking in the Falls View area, and of course, they went with bylaws 79-200. The other older areas are where there's a problem, and where there's the walking traffic, and it seems to be offset by the private sector, who are actively involved in running parking lots that are very lucrative for them. So I think that, I'm finally glad that this is here, we have some speakers, this has been vetted through all of the BIAs for three years now, and hopefully, it's time to move on. They have some very positive input in what they'd like to see happen, and I think it's going to be an interesting development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will also result in staff rejecting an appeal, as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council now hear from anyone that would like to approach the council and speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Do we have anybody, yes, Talia? Skilberti, if you could indulge us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unlike JT, I'm at 5'2", so the speaker has to come way down for me. I represent the Falls View BIA and the Victoria Center BIA, and I would like to advise that their concerns with respect to the matters before you are the same. Before I provide my client's comments, I would like to firstly, take this opportunity to commend staff in having held numerous meetings with the public and with myself while representing my clients, and for having listened to our concerns, and for having taken these matters back to the proverbial drawing board. The report before you has come a very long way since we first started meeting in 2009. However, it is my client's position that not all their concerns have been dealt with, and we hope that we can address them here tonight. The staff report has dealt with one of our outstanding concerns, and that is staff's recognition that although the city consultant recommended to implement a policy prohibiting applicants from submitting parking demand studies in the future, staff has not included this policy, because that would negate an applicant's right to apply under the Planning Act for an amendment. That was our client's position with respect to same from the onset, and we therefore thank Mr. Hrlavich and his staff for not pursuing the study recommendation. However, our clients continue to have two main concerns with the present staff report. The first one, it deals with bus substitutions, and the second one has to do with proposed area to be controlled by the recommended parking exemption. There are also a few other recent requests that I have received recently, and I will comment on same also. With respect to the bus substitutions, the staff's report pursuant to the consultant's study proposes for the use of hotels, the substitution of one bus parking space for 20 car parking spaces, up to a maximum of two bus substitutions, and therefore, an exemption of 40 parking spaces. This proposal would therefore permit exemptions of up to those 40 car parking spaces if a hotel could provide appropriate bus parking. My clients have persistently been requesting that the maximum bus substitution be increased up to as many as five bus substitutions in certain circumstances only. Why should parking space exemptions for the provision of parking, bus parking be limited to only two bus parking spaces for the larger hotels? The larger hotels have always contended that a hotel containing more than 300 rooms should be entitled to a prorated increased parking space exemption to a maximum of five bus substitutions. For example, a hotel containing 300 rooms or more but less than 400 rooms should be permitted to have up to three bus parking-related exemptions, and a hotel containing 400 rooms or more but less than 500 rooms should be permitted to have up to four bus parking-related exemptions, and a hotel containing 500 rooms or more should be permitted to have up to five bus parking-related exemptions with a cap at five bus parking-related exemptions. Furthermore, my clients have always maintained that the location of this bus parking could be provided onsite or offsite if the particular offsite parking is married in with such development for zoning purposes. Staff is recommending a limit of up to two bus substitutions, because larger hotels generally have more amenity space onsite, where the exemptions for amenity space provide a similar kind of benefit. My clients contend that the issue of larger amenity space is irrelevant. The larger hotels have larger amenities because they have the room count that can support such larger amenities. For example, a 100-room hotel would certainly not provide a restaurant with 500 seats, because the room count could not support the need for such a larger amenity or ancillary use. The staff-proposed exemptions provided for larger amenities has nothing to do with the proposed prorated bus substitution parking exemptions based upon hotel room count, because a hotel with more than 500 rooms, having a restaurant with more than 500 seats, could easily accommodate the said restaurant with its own hotel guests. Therefore, there is no need to provide any more parking, and the same type of bus substitutions should be provided based upon the proposed prorated exemptions that I just referred to earlier. Again, up to the maximum of five bus substitutions. In any event, common sense will always dictate the number of parking spaces that must be provided to accommodate a particular hotel and its ancillary uses. If the new proposed standards are utilized by a particular hotel of providing one space for every 1.25 rooms, rather than one parking space for every two rooms, and the bus substitutions on the prorated, on the proposed prorated increased bus substitutions was utilized, and the hotel was deficient and could not properly function without appropriate parking, then obviously, that particular hotel would need to provide appropriate parking in order to accommodate its business needs. Therefore, I respectfully submit that my client's request of the increased bus substitution up to five bus parking spaces on the proposed prorated schedule should be favorably accepted by you. With respect to the second concern, the proposed area for exemptions, my client's second concern pertains to the proposed area of parking exemptions. Pursuant to my letters to staff dated November 3, 2011, and November 23, 2011, both the Victoria Center and Falls View BIAs wish to be treated equally in the same manner, and have all the parking exemptions proposed in the staff report be equally available to all lands in both BIAs. The staff report contends that the city's transportation department does not support these requests, mainly because there is no municipal parking lots available in the Falls View area, and because there is no technical study to support this. With all due respect, the consultant's report is dated May 2009, based upon a study conducted much earlier than that. The terms of reference provided to the consultant did not include the study of this expanded area, and therefore, the study is silent with respect to same. However, since that time, the dream of a people mover system being implemented in the central tourist district of Niagara Falls has become, or will very soon become, a reality in August. In 1981, in Niagara Falls, the Victoria Center and the Clifton Hill areas were considered to be the most, or the main pedestrian-oriented tourist commercial areas of the city outside of Queen Victoria Park. Since that time, these areas have expanded and now include, the entire area, which is now included within the boundaries of the Victoria Center BIA. Therefore, the entire area within that BIA and within the Falls View BIA, which has also become a very busy pedestrian-oriented commercial area, should be included. The Niagara Falls, Falls View Casino, and the Scotiabank Convention Center have brought two enormous parking facilities that did not exist in 1981, and certainly were not considered by the city's consultant. However, and most importantly, if the Wego system, which is now a reality, is to be properly supported, I suggest that the users of the system should be able to stop at any of the several bus stops located within the Falls View and Victoria Center BIA areas, and walk to any of the numerous business establishments in those areas. In fact, the elimination of potential commercial parking lots has been long identified as a necessity to support the Wego system. It no longer seems reasonable that the Victoria Center BIA that has been the subject of a parking exemption since 1981 should receive preferential treatment over the remainder of the same BIA, nor should it receive preferential treatment over an entire BIA, given all of the changes that have occurred in the city since 1981. Therefore, I respectfully suggest that the entire areas within the boundaries of both the Victoria Center and Falls View BIAs be equally treated with the proposed parking exemption. With respect to the other two requests, most recently, I've been contacted by some individual members of both BIAs, and I have been asked, and I was asked that you consider the elimination of the proposed parking requirements as set out in option two for ancillary uses in a hotel, such as the need to provide one parking space per 15 seats above 300 seats. So what I'm referring to is the third line down ancillary restaurant to a hotel. Option two outlines, restaurants having more than 300 seats require one space for every 15 seats above 300. Also, I have been asked to ask that you also consider the elimination of the same type of requirement with respect to ancillary meeting and convention rooms to a hotel, with respect to any convention or meeting room space above 1,400 square meters. Without repeating myself, with respect to the matters that I have already raised pertaining to the abundance of parking spaces located in the Falls View BIA, and with respect to all of the Wego concerns, I'm respectfully submitting that such additional parking requirements be eliminated for those ancillary hotel uses. As a point of clarification, with respect to attachment one, which was included in the staff report, which are the draft policies for the OPA amendment, I would refer you to that, I would like confirmation from staff to you that the Victoria Center BIA lands are included in the definition of the central, of the Clifton Hill tourist district as set out in the staff report. If that is, if that is the case, there are no concerns. However, if that is not the case, the policies should be amended to make reference specifically to the Victoria Center BIA lands being included. I respectfully propose, on behalf of all of the members of those two BIAs, being the Falls View and Victoria Center BIA, that the following amendments, which I have summarized for you, be considered and approved. I've provided a copy of that to Mr. Hrlavich, and also to my friend here, Mr. DiLorenzo, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Gilberti? Mr. Hrlavich, could you want to comment on any of the suggestions that were just brought forward?
Excuse me, counsel, first, I'll answer the councillor's, or the solicitor's last comment, and she was asking for clarification as to whether or not the Clifton Hill district is part of the central district. It is, the official plan has a Schedule F in there, which identifies where the various tourist districts are in the city, and so within that central district are the Clifton Hill district, and which includes Victoria Center, which I believe was her question.
Thank you.
And as for the other, I believe you have her handout, those are modifications that she's requesting on behalf of her clients, and she's asking that council add those as modifications to the recommendation of staff.
And how do you, with recommendation of staff? Like, have you seen these? Do you have a copy?
Well, yes, but they're the same ones that we've been talking about for the last three years.
Okay.
Five buses versus two buses. She wants all of Falls View exempt, and all of the Victoria Center area exempt from parking for certain uses that are prescribed in the bylaw. The, she wants to exempt where we recommend 300 restaurants and hotels over 300 would have to provide parking, she's saying she would like that exempt. Meeting space over 14,000 square feet, that's about what that size of 14,000 square meters is, would be exempt. So basically, you can see what staff's recommending, they're suggesting that they not provide that. Her basis is that the business operators are going to provide what the business operators need.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments of council from Ms. Gilberti? Counselor Gates?
Just your comment, you said that you've been in conversations for approximately three years on this issue, on the expansion that she's handed out today.
These issues keep growing, so the 300 seats, I think, is new, but it comes down to the same, same thing, and that is that the hoteliers would like to provide the least amount of space that they could possibly get away with, and so on. So, in essence, we've increased, if you look at option one versus option two, you know, they're providing half a parking space per room under the current system. We're going to require that they provide one and a quarter parking spaces, or one space per one and a quarter rooms. So we've actually increased that by more than 100%. So in essence, we believe that there's still some need. You heard from Ms. Gilberti, she said that a 500-seat, or 500-room hotel can certainly produce enough patrons to fill a 500-seat restaurant. I don't know, mathematically, I suppose it makes sense, but as I said, some of those restaurants, we feel when they get over 300 seats, become destinations in and of themselves, and so it attracts people who are day trippers to the city, and those people are parking somewhere. And if we don't have municipal lots, perhaps, or parking as Alderman Carrion suggests, or Counselor Carrion suggests, and that is in private lots.
Okay. Counselor Gates, does that answer your question?
Well, the private lots are interesting to me, because I've heard that a couple times already, yet I'm hearing the lawyers say that they're trying to get away from private lots till the week of, our new bus system will be used. I mean, so you can't have both, like, do we want the people mover to work, or do we want it not to work? I guess that's where I'm trying to kind of figure out where you're trying to head here.
You have our recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Did you want to comment on that?
Yes, I just want to make sure you understood my comment, and the comment was, the studies that were done over the last 10, 15 years with respect to the proposed people mover, now the Wego system, considered and recommended the elimination of commercial parking lots in order to support that. I'm not suggesting that commercial parking lots, and my clients are not suggesting that. I'm just suggesting what has been studied in the past. If the people mover system is to be made a-go, then those lots may prohibit or impact on that. However, we don't want to be required to provide parking that's not necessary, and we want people to use the people mover system to get around town and go from one establishment to the other.
Thanks, Sarah Paul.
Thank you.
Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, your worship. I guess it's the, I've talked to some of the larger hotel owners, and I guess it's really not, they don't look at it as what they can try and get away with, that's not the way they're looking at it. I think that they think, they know how to run their business... I think that they think they know how to run their business a little bit better than some of the staff people that are making the recommendations. I think that they pay their multimillion dollar mortgages very well, they hire thousands of people, they operate their businesses very efficiently. I think it's just a difference of opinion. I think they think they know how to run their business a little better, and I think it's up to this council, I guess, to decide who they think they should agree with, whether that's the people who are running the businesses successfully, or whether it's the people that hire the people to do the parking studies. I don't know, you know, that's the choice. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I think that was kind of a poor choice of words, get away with. These are legitimate businesses that are successful and intend to continue to be successful. Just a question regarding the, when I listened to your submission, did you have a couple of additions to this handout?
The additions were the ones that are included in Item C, which were the elimination of the parking spaces for the ancillary uses in the hotels for restaurants having more than 300 seats and for the convention center or the meeting room.
So this is the entire?
This is the entire, this is their entire wish list, Christmas wish list, in July.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Gilberti? Is there anybody else here that wants to speak to this issue? Yes, there are? Okay, okay, so are there more questions for Ms. Gilberti then? Okay, we're good, thanks very much. Okay. Yes, sir, if you'd like to step up, introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Mr. DiLorenzo?
Thank you. My name is Don DiLorenzo, and I'm here on behalf of the Clifton Hill BIA. For the record, my clients substantially beefeated in Ho-Koh and Ip-Koh. Firstly, I see it's a nice day, and I see you have a very long agenda, and I'll try to make my comments as short and succinct as I can. It's evident that the town or city, excuse me, I do a lot of work for the town of Niagara. The city has expended considerable time and effort to address these parking concerns over a number of years, and it's no doubt that the people mover system will alleviate more concerns as they arise. I'm encouraged to see that action's been taken and things are moving forward, and with respect to the modifications requested by Ms. Gilberti, I echo her comments. My concern here today, and the reason I am here today, is with respect to the concept of an exemption for certain areas of the tourist area, which incorporate almost every area of the central tourist area but Clifton Hill. As I read the staff report, the initial exemption was for the purpose of encouraging redevelopment and expansion of existing facilities. And in fact, the reason for the exemption was that a lot of the facilities that had been built, had been built prior to bylaw 79200. Well, as a resident of Niagara Falls, Clifton Hill has been along here a lot longer than 79200, and most of the development on Clifton Hill was done before 79200. So if the rationale is, the exemption is to apply to areas that were developed prior to that bylaw, Clifton Hill should be at the top of that list. Clifton Hill is excluded, and in the report, there's no suggestion as to why it was excluded. Simply put, if the council decides to expand the exemption area past that recommended by staff, there's no reason why that Clifton Hill should not be included. In fact, there's every reason why Clifton Hill should be included. So I'm simply asking that any proposed amendments be comprehensive, make sense logically, and that Clifton Hill also be included in any exemptions. Subject to any questions, those are all my comments.
Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. DiLorenzo? Mr. Hurlovich, did you want to comment on the report not specifically addressing the Clifton Hill area?
This is the little project that grew. So, I believe Ms. Gilberti said it, and that is, the consultant responsible for the 2009 parking demand study didn't look at exemptions. That came up sometime, maybe 2010, I'm going to suggest, where Ms. Gilberti came forward and asked that Victoria Avenue be exempt, just as Ferry Street is exempt. When we brought that recommendation back last year, she asked that all of the Victoria Center Street be exempt, so it grew a little bit. And then Ferry, or all of the Fallsview area was, so this is the first time we're actually hearing that Clifton Hill would like to be exempt. So that's why it wasn't accounted for. That request has never been made to staff in the past. Council's considering it now. One of our proposed policy changes in the official plan is that we provide for exemptions, so the accountability for council to provide exemptions in certain areas, but it does say, I believe, the Clifton Hill and Fallsview Districts, so we may want to make sure that if you're going to include Clifton Hill, that we also include that as well. But, anyway. Now, we haven't advertised an exemption for Clifton Hill, but I'm not sure whether or not it makes a specific difference to whether we can, council can actually pass the bylaw. We'll be bringing the bylaw back to a separate meeting, and perhaps we can cover that off at that time.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Dren?
If I can add, you know, there's been statements about the consultant didn't look at this area and didn't look at this area. One of the reasons they didn't look at the Fallsview area, because it's a brand new area. The difference between the Fallsview area and the Victoria Center is it had cash and loop. It had a cash and loop opportunity. The consultant specifically was not looking at the Fallsview area because it was considered a brand new area, the abilities to provide parking, provide what it needed, were there because of the amount of open space there is there. And so that's why the consultant didn't do it. It was for that reason. And so, you know, that's the difference of what's, difference with the consultant. Secondly, the exemption for Victoria, there wasn't an exemption. The only exemption that occurred, or the only exemption there was, was on Ferry Street near the old Capri. And that area was exempt from parking, but the rest of Victoria and Center was not. And it had that cash and loop option, and that's why. When we looked at parking, there was the Lamner-Fenko study from the 1980s, you know, there was specific areas designated for parking, and there were specific areas that were designated cash and loop. And cash and loop is an incentive, not a deterrent. It's to give people the opportunity to provide, if they can't provide all the parking on their property, gives them the opportunity to give, say they have to provide 40 spaces, they can only do 20, they would give the other 20 value at a 50% level to the city to put it on reserve to be able to build parking. So that's the reasoning behind why the consultant didn't look at these areas like Clifton Hill and like the Fallsview area.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Is there anybody else with questions for Mr. DiLorenzo?
No other questions for Mr. DiLorenzo. Is there anybody else here that wants to address the council on this topic? Okay. Did you, your questions to Mr. DiLorenzo? Okay, then we might as well move along here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Do we have motion, Counselor Thompson?
Well, a motion, but certainly some comments first. Just listening to Mr. Dren really tells the story about every time we went to a BIA meeting to discuss this issue, the same comments were made. Well, why is it being done in one area and not the other? Why don't we have equality with respect to this issue throughout the tourism districts? And this includes Fallsview, Victoria Center, and certainly Clifton Hill, as Mr. DiLorenzo has suggested. So, this has been vetted so much through the industry, and hours and hours, and I appreciate the staff has had some flexibility with respect to some of these issues, but this is a situation where business people are not going to deprive themselves of the opportunity to get people in their front door and have people park in their area and have a successful business. They're not trying to put themselves in a situation that is going to deter their opportunity to put business. And if there is any need, I can guarantee you, within a heartbeat, the private sector will be stepping forward and putting up private parking, which is very lucrative. We are just on the start of a new era in this community with the WeGo system, where people are going to be taken from their hotel, to be shunted from one district to another to the park system, and it's going to be a whole new ballgame with respect to parking, and it's going to be better for the people to park in their hotel rooms and to get around and not have to jump in and drive down to the park. So I think the requests that have not come easily from the BIAs, they are consistent with all of them, and they all want equality. So, thank you for preparing the summary here, and the only addition, I would move the amendments to the report from Ms. Gilberti, along with the Clifton Hill being included as requested by the Clifton Hill BIA, which is represented here by Mr. DiLorenzo. That's all moving.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, moving the recommendation with the amendments that are presented here by Ms. Gilberti, with the further amendment that the Clifton Hill area be included as well, brought forward by Mr. DiLorenzo. Is there any comments to the motion? Okay, then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, all right, thank you very much. It's approved. Thank you. PD 201236 proposed change from residential loan to residential grant for the downtown community improvement plan. We're going to ask our clerk to address this.
Prior to the meeting, we received an email from the downtown BIA requesting deferral to this item. Obviously, it's up to council whether they wish to defer or not. Oops, sorry.
Counselor Morocco?
I'd like to move to trial.
Okay. Second to motion. Okay, moved by Counselor Morocco, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we defer. Non-debatable motion. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, mayor's remarks?
Move to trial.
You guys are beautiful. You're beautiful. First off, we'll start obituaries. Mr. Carl Drenner, Director of Transportation's mother, Teresa, she passed away at the age of 86 on June the 13th, and we extend our condolences to Mr. Dren. This past week, we had a number of things go on of interest, and I'll try to briefly run through them. Dr. Smith had an NHS site tour and then an eventual Chamber of Commerce event, and there were a number of city councils at that event. I know Counselor Thompson, Ainoni, and Morocco were there. Did I miss anyone else from that event? No. And Counselor Gates, you were at that event as well?
I was.
The Chamber of Commerce with Mr. Smith. Dr. Smith?
I was not there.
Okay, you were not there.
Not in town, actually.
All right, that's, okay. So anyway, he was in town, and we definitely put arguments forward about locations for the Niagara South Hospital, and as well, this council's reaffirmation and solidarity with the other councils of Niagara South, that we do not want our labor and delivery maternal child services moved until the new Niagara South Hospital is built, and that they be moved only once into that hospital, not twice into Niagara North and then to Niagara South. So we made that very clear where we stood on that. Nick Wolenda, Friday, June the 15th, made his historic walk, and we were very pleased to see the crowds, the comments from people, they've never seen so many people in the park before. It was a very exciting scene and by far the most heavily watched event on the planet that day, and by all accounts, it was a big success. We want to thank our fire department and the Niagara Parks and the Parks Police specifically for their contingency safety plan, which they were ready just in the event that they needed Plan B. Luckily, we did not need it, and the wonderful thing was, as Nick was finished and he kept saying, the view of Niagara Falls was spectacular, I had people saying, I've never seen the falls look the way they did that night in high definition. Those views of the falls were just absolutely spectacular. And the neat thing, now we've got footage all over the world showing the falls at their absolute very best, and the buzz around the globe has just been sensational. And the nice thing is, we've gone from the back burner to the front burner, people are talking about us around the water coolers and the dinner tables, and I know that they're going to be planning the trips out here, and as Nick said, you know, it's one thing to see it on TV, it's an absolute different thing to have the mist at your face and experience the rainbows. And he says, it's like eating a steak or seeing the picture of a steak. There's seeing a picture of the falls, and there's experiencing the falls. There's only one way to experience it, right here in person, and that was the message. So, thank you to all who supported it, including this council, who were the leaders initially that put a unanimous resolution forward, encouraging the support of this walk to take place. Took a lot of partners and a lot of people participating, from our MPP, our Chamber of Commerce, Niagara Falls Tourism, and then all the BIAs and the RTO all coming together to support this event. Obviously, people came from near and far to see the event and watch history being made right in our backyard. It's pretty exciting as we look back on what actually took place here in Niagara Falls. The official opening at Queenston was the 1812 celebrations. We had the Governor General here as we kicked off the festivities. Many of us wore 1812 suits in the hot sun, and we will not forget that day. Christchurch that same day had the chiming of their bells, 100-year-old bells, which took place as well, pretty neat to see. As well, in our downtown area at the Old Market, there's now a Niagara holistic lifestyles pavilion, where there's a natural holistic ways to deal with your health, from stones to massages to oils to music. It's worth a look if you haven't been down there. Laura Seacord Unilever Trail Project, Counselor Morocco attended on our behalf, we appreciate that. The 59th Annual Rose and Flower Show, of course, Counselor Gates attended that, he's a big rose and flower expert, I'm told, in his backyard, so we appreciate your expertise at that event. Breakfast Television Live took place from Oaks Garden Theater this past week, it was great weather, and it was a great turnout as well, and they seem to have a great time when they come to Niagara Falls. A lot of excitement, it was really neat too, and they asked everybody in the Sheridan that was watching BT to wave their towels out the window, and to see all these towels waving out to show the participation was pretty neat. We recently had the swearing in of our new police chief, Jeffrey Maguire, and we're looking forward to get to know him well, as he participates with us in our community, as he came down from Toronto. The DeVal Hospice had a golf fundraiser specifically to raise money for a pediatric hospice. This would be the first in all of Canada. So when there's a child who's, you know, in a bad place in terms of sickness, they can go to a nice place that'll be warm and not as cold as maybe a hospital or not one of those sterile environments. I know a number of our city staff helped out with that event, including our clerk, Mr. Arafida, and Mr. Bob Bolabrook were participants, as well as a lot of other volunteers, and we appreciate that down at the Thundering Waters. Tender Wishes had their car show at Station 6 this past weekend, and they had a great turnout and some amazing cars. Everyone will notice inside of your packages, there's an organ donor awareness card that's put inside, if any of you have interest in your passing.
I'm a card dealer.
Yeah, we've, Counselor Maves, I understand you're leading the charge with your organs?
No problem.
That's good, that's right.
If you want some old eyes, they've always been preserved.
Those organs have been pickled, have they? Well, that's good to know.
Have they taken old organs?
Old organs? I don't know what the, but I know that they're in desperate need of all these, and I filled out my donor card, I've always thought about it, never actually done it, so I've now filled one out myself as well. We'd encourage you to go to the website, www.beadonor.ca as well, and register. And there was an organ donor awareness run through Queen Victoria Park, which was represented by Counselor Morocco, and pretty neat, this boy running through on his brother's behalf, his brother who died, and they donated his brother's organs, and they saved four lives. And, yeah, what was that, Counselor Morocco?
Sorry, your worship, there was a young lady that joined him as well this time.
Your worship, there was a young lady that joined him as well this time around, and also she had a sibling that died, and they donated her brother's organs as well, which actually gave three other people, children, an opportunity to leave. And I believe one was from Palestine, the other one was from Israel, so different parts of the world, but still, it was amazing to see how they come together to make it work and support the donation. And I believe that Mercer has a special message to you, that he would challenge that with the other communities and help you in the state of Niagara Falls to raise the largest amount of donor cards.
Well, we've got a message. Thank you, Counselor Morocco, from Rick Mercer from the Mercer Report. We offered that we're going to put these donor cards. We put them in all the staff. We're distributing them to all the staff, all the councillors, and encourage everyone to fill them out. Once you're gone, you know, you're not going to be using your organs, and we're suggesting at least there's someone out there you could save a life or many lives. And in this case, you're right, there's a Palestinian boy, and the help people in Israel, they met with the Pope, and he's making sure that it's non-denominational, that he reaches out to all different groups, and amazing that he's doing this. And he's run to Niagara Falls. It was her dream to come here, and we're glad that he did. So anyway, we encourage everyone to fill out your donor cards. I know it feels a little awkward for some people to do, but once you fill it out, it's really quite easy and it's a wonderful thing. There was 125th anniversary celebration this weekend of the Lundie's Lane Historical Society. So I went and brought greetings, and from there, I went straight to the Knights of Columbus 100th anniversary, and I stayed for the dinner there. And so the people at the Lundie's Lane Historical Society said, well, why wouldn't you have dinner with us? Doesn't 125 trump 100? I said, yes, it does, but you people don't carry swords. So I'm going to go to the other event at the Knights of Columbus. So we had a great night with our bishop and a lot of other dignitaries, and it was a nice celebration.
Did Joe put over that well there, too?
Yeah, went over well. Actually, it went over a little better there. They were actually paying attention, so that's the difference. I hadn't lulled them to sleep yet. Regional Italian Heritage Celebration this weekend at Club Italia was the grape stomp competition, and we put in our secret weapon, Counselor Peter Angelo, and of course, we said because he's in very good shape and he has very big feet, and that he would lead. And I'm happy to say, he got the trophy back to Niagara Falls, which we had lost to Port Colborne. He took Wallenda, he took our publisher, the Niagara Falls Review, Mark Cresmanow.
That was easy.
He said it was easy. He said they couldn't have even filled the Dixie Cup with what they had. He had a jug filled. How about a big hand for Counselor Peter Angelo? Counselor, any comments on the competition?
Worship, just to keep the feud going between Mr. Cresman and I, I think I could have filled the Demijohn before he filled his little one-liter bottle. You know the old adage of what they say about guys with big feet, so it was all well having me there.
What do they say about guys with big feet?
I'll leave it at that.
They have big shoes, right? That's right.
Am I in the pizza right now?
Okay. Moving on, St. Paul had their graduation last night at Brock, and we wished them all well. Coming up events, 30th Annual Canada Day Parade, and the last one to leave from the Optimist will take place this coming Sunday morning, 10:00 AM, that we're going to be meeting down there. And the parade, I believe, starts at 11:00. Is that the correct time? We get some confirmation on that, Ms. Mulder? At 10:00 o'clock? The parade begins at 10:00. Okay. So the parade begins at 10:00. So everybody, you want to watch it. It's always a huge attendance, and it's always a lot of fun. Also, please mark in your calendars Friday, the 13th of July. We're going to have a welcoming home celebration for Mike Strange. This is going to take place at Optimist at 6:00 PM. Again, Friday, July the 13th at Optimist, and we're encouraging... I'm sorry, yes, Counselor Peter Angelo, would you like to...
The only thing I was going to say, your worship, is that there's an item on our additions to council in regards to that.
Yes.
It's a resolution for council to pass. It just offers consideration to the event, supports provision of a special occasion like your license, and I believe that they're also asking for the metal barricades, and when you're ready for motion...
Why don't we do that right now?
Sure, I'll move it now.
Okay, we've got that in the package. Oh, just before we get that, allow us to...
That's not really what the request is. You're confusing two requests. Their request is related to an extension on the noise bylaw.
Noise bylaw, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the metal, the barricades, we've already provided, so that's already been accomplished, so...
And then the noise extension.
Yeah. There's a number of noise extensions. Maybe I should address them when we get to that point in the agenda.
Okay.
I'll address them all together.
Okay, fair enough. Appreciate you bringing that forward, Counselor. Also, we've got the Niagara Falls Motorcycle Show, which will be July 20th to the 22nd at the Scotia Centre. Our Niagara Falls Museum will have its grand opening Saturday, July the 21st at 2:00 PM. You don't want to miss this. The place, if you haven't been in there, it looks spectacular. It is just the most gorgeous design, and they're just bringing the artifacts in now and designing all the showcases, but you definitely want to be there. Saturday, July 21st, 2:00 PM for the Niagara Falls History Museum on Ferry Street. And last couple items, this summer at Fireman's Park, every Thursday night at 7:00 PM, we're going to have the Summertime Blues, including the Steve Burnside Band. That'll be every Thursday night at Fireman's Park. Fireman's Park, Thursday nights, don't miss it, right until the end of August. And as well, there'll be Music at Covington Square, presented by the Village of Chippewa Citizens Committee, and this will take place Sunday nights at 7:00 PM through the months of July and August for Music at Covington Square. And that concludes the mayor's announcements. Yes, Counselor Maves?
Ah, your worship, just another item, too. I had the pleasure of representing yourself and council at the 20th anniversary of Lundie Manor, formerly Carrillo Place. I think our fellow councillor had something to do with the building of that, but they celebrated their 20th anniversary, and it was great to see some of my schoolteachers and some more family friends there, so it was really a nice evening. Or afternoon, I should say.
Thank you very much, and thanks for representing us, Counselor. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, just another obituary. I think you saw in the paper today, Robert "Bob" Theo passed away, a great friend of certainly Counselor Carrillo and I, a great businessman in the community for many, many years, modern steel, involved in the abrasive business, really the one who built the Chippewa Marina as a Commodore. Great young man. I'd like a letter sent from you to the family and a resolution from council on his passing. Robert Theo, and I would so move.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrillo. All those in favor? Okay?
And I was very pleased to hear your comments about Wallenda. Certainly, I think you have to be congratulated on a last-minute effort to stimulate a lot of support from the Canadian side, and I think we, as a result, outdid anything that could have been done otherwise and was probably very necessary. And I think your efforts there certainly have to be brought to the attention of the council and the community, and I congratulate you personally for that. That was, without exception, the most spectacular event that this community has ever seen. Along with that, I'm glad you mentioned it because you mentioned the falls itself. For the past four or five years, I've been trying to excite people, the Parks Commission and others, about the illumination of the falls. You saw it there.
Yeah.
The back of the falls was lit. The only other time that it's been done was Greg Fruen did a magic act and had it, has it on his DVD that he has at his place of business. The most important thing we have here is the falls. That's why people come here. And yet, the illumination has had its day the way it is. What we saw the other night on television with Wallenda walking across there was truly spectacular, and it went around the world. And that's what we should be working towards. So I'm, a resolution again, asking if you, along with the illumination group, and could start a movement with the private sector, who I've talked to, and they're very anxious, particularly after they saw what happened with the Wallenda event. Many people didn't know what I was talking about and... What do you mean, light up the back of the falls? There's already illumination there. Well, I tell you, when Wallenda walked over the brink of the Horseshoe Falls from the American side, and the shot was there with the falls pouring down in behind him, that really told the story. It was just unbelievable. So, Mr. Mayor, please see if we can do something over the next few years to work towards having that kind of illumination on the falls nightly to bring even more people here and make it more spectacular.
We can bring a motion forward to Counselor Maves.
I would like to make a motion to that, and hopefully you'll lead the charge on that. And I say, if we can ever pull that off, that's what we're all about. I'd so move.
Yeah, okay. Moved by Counselor Thompson, and seconded by Counselor Maves.
Yeah, I'd be happy to second that. As you know, the mayor and I are on the illumination board. I think one of the biggest problems we have again is finances. I believe we operate with a budget of something like $105,000 a year, which $35,000 comes from this council, $35,000 from Niagara Falls, New York, and $35,000 from the Parks Commission. Now, obviously, it's going to cost some more money. I think that possibly at the next meeting, we will bring that up, and we'll do our best to try and get that changed and see if we can get that lit up, because it was spectacular, and I think obviously everybody would like to see that. Now, there again, money might be a big factor, but there again, if it's going to bring the business to the city, I think it'd be well worth the effort.
Counselor? I'm aware of the funding issues, and that's why I say the BIAs, Niagara Falls Tourism, a lot of the private sector that are directly overlooking there are all going to be partners in this, so maybe we can pull it off.
And you're right, you know, that everyone commented on when he first crossed Terrapin Point, that view, that just seemed to have some awe. People just... Everyone I talked to from everywhere, including, I won't mention their names, but certain reporters, television reporters, said they were a little skeptical that this thing was going to be as big as it was, and they said they're truly blown away. And they said the falls were just spectacular. Like, to hear people that have seen the falls thousands of times say, I was really... I had one military person come up to me at the 1812 event, say, you know, I've never been so proud to be from Niagara Falls. The falls looked as good as I've ever thought they could look. So we have a motion on the floor from Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Maves, that we send a letter to the illumination board encouraging the full illumination of the falls, similar to what we had for Wallenda and Fruen. And we'll call that vote then. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? That's great, thank you. Communications and comments. Okay, so we've got six different items. We've got the downtown BIA requesting various waivers related to events planned for the summer. Moved by Counselor Morocco, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Counselor?
Your worship, I just wanted to ask a question. I support the motion. In this staff report that we have, they have two different amounts for parking rates, and I'm just wondering, for budgeting purposes, how this works? I mean, I think that what council does is we set up a certain budget, and then we put some money into that budget, and anytime that there's a request for, I guess, a grace in terms of fees and various items, we take money from that budget and then we transfer it over to the department? Is that correct?
Can we get an answer, Mr. Mayor?
Harrison?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, that's the correct methodology that we have.
Okay. I'm just wondering then, since we're paying for this, obviously, because we're transferring money from one area to the next, what rate will we charge for parking?
Well, we'd have to charge the appropriate rate, which would be indicative of what would be the amount. I mean, it's just an internal charge. In essence, the way it really works is that there's a line item amount that council is provided in the budget that allows them to grant, provide waivers, grants, et cetera. And once you, you know, then it's just an offset of revenue into the other area, so...
No, I understand, but is this the, like, is this the full parking rate?
I don't know.
Like, are we assuming that the parking meters would have been used for the entire time, or is this...
It's based on actual, so we look at past years. We say, okay, how much revenue was generated during that time period?
Okay, as long as it's based on actuals, that's fine, your worship.
You're concerned that they're basing it on every meter being used all hours of the day, kind of thing?
Yeah, a lot of times, your worship, like, when, you know, when a request is made for exemption from parking, a lot of times in the staff report, when it'll come back, the staff will say, well, that meter there has the opportunity to generate this much revenue if it's used from 7:00 AM until 7:00 AM the next morning. But if it's based on actuals, then I can appreciate that. If it's based on, you know, that meter being used for a 24-hour period, every single minute, then I would have objected to it, but that's fine if it's based on actuals. Thank you.
Okay, so we have the motion. Call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, great. Questions? Okay. Mr. Clerk, do you like to speak to these?
Yeah, just, there are a series of requests to extend the noise bylaw, so actually, requests two to five are related to that, and we actually did advertise these extensions in the newspaper in case there was any, anybody from the public who had any concerns. We didn't receive any comments, and as referred to earlier, we have an additional request for an extension on the noise bylaw related to the event on July 13th for Mike Strange at the Optimist Club, so extending the noise bylaw in that area to 11:00 PM. So I would suggest you could probably take all of those in one motion.
So we've got...
Moved by your worship.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Carrillo, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Recommendations, two to five, plus the additional one for the Optimist event. Yes, Counselor Morocco?
Your worship, I'll support the motion. Just wanted to ask the clerk, there was an issue that came forward not too long ago, and I know it's probably not the right time, but since it is on our agenda here, the Niagara Motorcycle Show, we've had some residents in the Chippewa area, and actually, a number of them also at the Boat Club that actually approached me in regards to some of the motorcycles that have the straight pipe. And Dean, we had a brief conversation. I forwarded you some of those emails from some of those residents. Maybe we can look at that in the future after the motorcycle show as to follow up?
Yeah, I responded to those in the sense that those would have, those infractions, noise related to moving motorcycles would have to be laid by the police. It's clearly not a municipal thing that my staff, obviously, can do. We don't have the wherewithal to chase after people on motorcycles, so it'd be up to the police to enforce that provision under the Highway Traffic Act. So, I mean, what you could do is, you know, request that it be forwarded to the police for their consideration.
Okay, then if I can actually make a motion... Oh, I can't do that right at this point.
Yeah, we just call this vote, and then...
Sure, sure.
Yeah, okay. So items two through five, plus the one additional for the Mike Strange event, July 13th. Call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's passed. And we've got one more here.
Do you want to take your...
Okay, you want to bring yours forward then, Counselor?
Okay, Dean, then if we can bring forward that motion. And actually, I just want to, just for council and staff, is that they're not opposing motorcycles, and a number of these people have their own motorcycles, and a lot of them actually do great deeds, as we know, to ride for dad and everything else that takes place. The concern is that some of these bikes that actually, you know, just want to just rip it, you know, let it go, and you've got this huge exhaust noise, and people said that in Chippewa, you know, it's a nice quiet community, and they're enjoying their porch and their backyard, and then they hear these noise makers going by. It's just the odd few, and I'm not sure, like I said to Dean, how we're going to enforce it, but apparently, the residents do want it brought forward to see how we can deal with it at council, so that's their wishes, and I'm just bringing it forward.
Okay.
Dean, the motion then would be...
So the motion is that we forward a letter to the police, to the Niagara Regional Police?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. In that regard, so we have a motion by Counselor Morocco. Can we get a second of that? Counselor Carrillo, any discussion to the motion? Counselor Wing?
Yes, there's a municipality out in western Canada where one of the residents is a scientist to develop a device for measuring noise coming from vehicles, and he's, I think he's donating the use to that municipality, but that might be something that we might want to investigate. I'll see if I can find the article.
Yeah, do some googling. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, I think that's either Edmonton or Calgary. I know Edmonton does have some sort of related bylaw, but I also assume Edmonton, the municipality of Edmonton also has the police under their jurisdiction. Obviously, we're a lower-tier municipality. We don't control the police, so we'd have to make that request.
Okay, Counselor Carrillo?
Just in regard to that, what Counselor Morocco was suggesting, it's already illegal to have straight pipes on motorcycles. It's just an enforcement issue. There's already a limit, and there's already a ticket available, and they'll make you you take them off, so...
Okay, we'll call a vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? And Mr. Clerk, or Clerk, regarding the Committee of Adjustment?
I'm just waiting for Counselor Morocco's ballot.
Do you have that in?
As per our process, the councilors are giving ballots, so, not that this will affect the final, but based on the votes, Paul Campagato would be the chosen appointee for the Committee of Adjustment to fill the vacancy, so I would ask that council make a motion to that effect.
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that Paul Campagato be appointed to the Committee of Adjustment. Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that the, the committee supported another person coming on, because there's also two other people on the committee right now, Jack Collins and Chuck Antonio, who are getting up there in age, and have already expressed the fact that they probably won't be running again in 2014, so just a little question.
Okay, that's great. Counselor Carrio?
Along with the motion to accept Mr. Campagato, could we also send congratulations or thankful, who left?
Yeah, we already did that.
Oh, we did that?
Yeah, that guy Prada a number of months ago.
Okay, so we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? It's great. Mr. Clerk?
And then just the final addition is related to a municipal, a resolution for a liquor license related to the downtown request to have jazz and blues in the Centennial Square during the months of July and August.
Okay, so we've got that. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, it's passed. Moving on to reports, ratification of Committee of the Whole recommendations. Counselor Morocco?
I know, Bert.
Or, I'm sorry, Counselor Maves.
The following items to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Number one, the Committee of the Whole minutes of June 12th, 2012 be approved. And other reports under L-2012-12, swimming pool bylaw, that in the event that council determines such a bylaw is necessary and in the public interest, the swimming pool bylaw be amended to require the drainage of swimming pools be confined, confined to the lot of the owner of the swimming pool, and that staff come back with the proposed amendments to the swimming pool bylaw. Under CD-2012-07, refreshment vehicles, that committee recommend to council that they deny the application to two refreshment vehicles at 5943 Stanley Avenue, and that committee recommend to council that it continue the practice as per CD-2012, 2011-12, to allow existing licensed restaurants to be allowed to have a refreshment vehicle on their premises, and that the local BIAs be canvassed on proposed changes to the section of the licensing bylaw for 2013, and I so move.
Okay, moved by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And Mr. Clerk, we don't have anything for in camera. Okay, moving along to the consent agenda. What's the...
Move the consent agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor, no, okay?
Well, I'll second it, but I won't pull it.
Okay, all right. Why don't we start, okay, who wants which ones pulled, then we'll move the remainder by Counselor Carrio. Okay, Counselor Gates, which one you want pulled?
01, 33, and 15.
Okay, 01, 33...
And 15.
And 15, okay. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I don't need it pulled. I just want, if there's anybody from engineering on 01, the low tender 47, 799, the next closest is 135, and the high is 235, or 223,000. Are we confident that for 47, and the nearest one is 135,000, that this is something that's going to get the job done?
Okay, let's, uh, Clerk, to comment on this?
Obviously, we were equally concerned. We've had discussions with the, with the proponents, and they've assured us that they will undertake the works based on the price that they submitted, which may have been a mathematical error, but they have done work with the city before, and they're committed to doing the project. There may be a couple of other opportunities for them to, there's a couple of, what do you call it, portables on the site that we may be able to compensate them on those, so they've said they'll go ahead based on the price, so we're recommending you approve it.
Okay. And Counselor Wing? Okay. Okay, and Counselor Peter Angelo?
Last one, your worship.
Sports policy?
RNC-15.
Okay, great. So, the rest of the consent agenda is being moved by Counselor Carrio, and seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Oh, did you have another one, Counselor?
Did anybody, Victoria Avenue Walnut Street intersection?
No. You want that one too?
It's a good consent agenda.
Okay, so we will move the remainder of the consent agenda, moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, so now the, we'll start with Counselor Gates. First question on BDD-2012-01, demolition of the building and related items at Colb Street, the old Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, just to Counselor Thompson's point, that was my concern, that I took a look at it and saw that was 90,000 less than anybody else, and my questions were kind of be directed at, have they done work for the city before? Are we confident that they're going to do the work? That was a concern, a concern of mine, so I'm just kind of repeating it, but that's why I'd asked to pull it. On, should I go to the next one on my...
Well, no, because we have to, what's that?
Move the vote.
Okay, so we'll move that one then, BDD-2012-01. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor? Okay, great. So now we'll get down to F-2012-33, municipal accounts. Counselor Gates?
Yes, just going through our accounts, I'd just like to know on Bond Field Construction Company Limited, contract services for $225,000, what were they for?
Mr. Harrison?
That was a release of a holdback.
Sorry, I didn't hear that?
I believe it was a release of a holdback.
It's from the Convention Center?
Yeah. And the reason why it was held back?
It was a performance issue. The matter was held back. I don't know specifically off the top of my head. I can get you the information.
Could you provide me with that information? Because obviously, the Convention Center's been up and running for well over a year now, so I'd just like to know what it is.
Yes, but sometimes these, these security deposits or holdbacks are significantly longer in nature, so...
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so can we move, move item F-2012-33? Moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Okay, and we'll get a report back on the Bond Field holdback for Counselor Gates and council. Counselor Gates, we've got L-2012-15, site plan and site plan agreement procedure regarding mortgages on title.
Yeah, and when I went, when I went through this, some of my concerns were just how much is, is the city going to be exposed by, by changing this? I think that's a concern. Reminds me a lot of where we stand on the pecking order on getting money back, you know, very similar to, say, a Nortel, where when they lost all their pensions and went, went into bankruptcy, where were they on the list? Well, the pensioners were at the bottom. And my concern is, by going to this, where are we on the pecking order as far as recouping any lost monies?
Okay, maybe, Mr. Burton?
Eva?
Well, the city doesn't have any monies at risk, so there is no, that's, it's not comparable to a situation where the city makes an investment. The issue is how much of a difference it makes in putting your, insisting that the mortgage be, or, sorry, that the site plan be ahead of the mortgage. And I've been wrestling with this personally for about, I'd say, 10 years, trying to figure out, really, does it make that much difference? And I come at this as somebody who's litigated these things. It's only since I became the city solicitor here that I've really been concerned about registering them. My exposure to these things has been when the thing's fallen apart. And quite frankly, being first in line didn't matter a darn to the mortgagee. And every single time I've done one, Counselor, I can assure you that when, when it came, when it came to the table, all the bank wanted was for the city to cooperate. If we get our securities properly in the site plan agreement, which we do do, then as far as any monies we need to complete works, we'll have them. So we're really in the driver's seat anyway. Some, I've had long discussions with my fellow city solicitors on this. I take great comfort in the fact that Toronto doesn't ask for it. I mean, they're going up against Donald Trump. He's got a lot of money, you know, and if that would be the kind of opponent they would face, their city solicitor is quite prepared to take him on without priority, so. And also Nancy at Burlington, she's very conservative, she does not think it's worth the effort. So that's two prominent lawyers that agree with me. I think that really, for the effort we put into this, Counselor, and other members of council, I don't believe we gain anything for all the effort. We'll be, we'll be in pretty much the same condition. I think the risks we're taking are relatively minimal.
Okay, so that was my question. You're comfortable with it on exposure, that's all?
Yes, and I've spent a lot of time thinking this over.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, Counselor Gates, did you want to move that?
Yes.
Moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, great. Next up, Counselor Thompson's got MW-2012-32, Victoria Avenue and Walnut Intersection Improvements.
Just a question regarding the participation from the casino.
Actually, what we did, as per this council's direction, I sent a letter to the OLG, specifically to Paul Godfrey, and he was in town a few weeks ago for the gaming conference, and I spoke with him specifically about the letter, because it was ironic, the day he was here, the day before, he had just signed the letter.
He was doing the same thing he told me.
What's that?
About your tax issue.
No, actually, no, he didn't. He said, he goes, "Thanks for the heads up." And so this way, he could tell his receptionist, "Don't even open it, just throw it right in the garbage, I know what it is." No, but I, I did, I said, "Listen," I said, "There's a direction before our council to improve that area." And I said, "I've sent you a letter, and we're asking, we know you're not contractually obliged to do this, but we're asking you to be a good corporate citizen and to help us participate." And I said, "We sent a letter to this effect." And he was actually quite open to it, and he appreciated the heads up. Where it goes, I mean, who knows? But, but we did address it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
It was a good letter.
Yeah, it was a good letter. You wrote it, right? Yeah. Can we have a motion then, Counselor Thompson, to receive that report?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and thank you. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? All right, thank you. Counselor Wing, we've got MW-2012-37, Chippewa Infrastructure Investment Report?
Yes, and the report acknowledges what we all know, which is that the Chippewa area sewer system has been prone to surcharging during heavy rainfall events, resulting in basement flooding and emergency sewer pumping, unfortunately, directly into the, into the brick. There's two solutions which staff are implementing. One is already being carried out, and the other one is going to be included in our forthcoming 10-year capital needs budget. Staff are also going to continue to try and get the extraneous flows dealt with, removing them from the system, which is our RAP program, the Weeping Tile Removal Assistance Program. But I know that hasn't been as picked upon as much as we would have liked to have seen. My concern is at the bottom of page three, city staff will continue to monitor the effectiveness of the solutions as they are implemented, and through demonstration of the effective increase in system capacity, consideration can be given to the introduction of additional flows from newer intensified development. And my concern is that while we still have basement flooding in Chippewa, and while we are still on occasion doing the emergency pumping into the river, should we be introducing any additional flows there at all? Because, you know, we've done the one project, the one that's five and a half million, the one that's 3.6 million, hasn't yet happened, and hopefully, it will sometime within the next 10 years. We've still got to get a lot more weeping tiles disconnected to get those extra waters out of the system. And in the meantime, if we bring additional flows on stream from new development, what's that going to mean for people whose basements are prone to flooding, and what's that going to mean for the environment? So I'm just sort of questioning the wisdom of continuing any development at all in Chippewa until we get these infrastructure issues dealt with.
Okay. Maybe we can get some comment from staff on that? Anyone from our engineering department or CIO, who would like to address this one? Kent, all right, Kent, we'll ask you. Did you want to comment on the report, Kent?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. As regard to introduction of newer intensified development, yeah, the, the proposed measures that are, that came forth out of the environmental study report were that we had introduced additional storage in strategic locations, which will give us up to a five-year return period storm event level of protection, and should eliminate the need for emergency pumping in those circumstances. Yeah, the, as Counselor Wing mentioned, the, the first step is currently being implemented and should go to construction either late this year or next year. And then the, the second item would be forward within the five, 10-year timeframe, subject to obviously, budget considerations. With respect to adding additional flows, I know there's a, I believe that the, there is an issue with the amount of spare capacity within the system, and there's a prescribed number of, I guess, free, free lots that have been allocated. Let's go over and fore on that, so. In terms of, I don't, I don't know if we want to entertain any kind of freezing development, but the, during, during wet weather events, there's issues with surcharging, but during dry, during dry weather, which most of the time there is capacity, so the addition of minor amounts of new flow probably would not create widespread systemic issues.
Okay, thank you. Counselor?
Yeah, I think I'm thinking of holding more rather than freezing development there, but, you know, it is the wet weather conditions that I'm concerned about, because that's when the basement floods happen, that's when we pump raw sewage into the waterways. And, you know, a five-year storm protection really doesn't give me much comfort, because I do remember a discussion here, sometime within the past few years, about how with the way we have climate change happening, a 50-year storm is happening more frequently than once every 50 years. And a 100-year storm is happening now more often than once every 100 years. So five years doesn't give me a lot of comfort. That means that, you know, to me, that perhaps, once or twice, you know, once every one or two years, somebody's going to get their basement flooded. And I think one basement flooding is too many. So that is why I'm concerned about the impacts of any new development coming on stream in that area until we get these infrastructure resolutions fully in place. And rather than a freeze, I'd like to look at a hold. And I guess maybe what I should do is make a motion to have staff look at this and report back on this. So I'll make that motion.
Yeah, wasn't Jeff supposed to report back?
Yeah, well, maybe we can, just I can ask, maybe CIO members, was Jeff was supposed to report back to us in that regard?
Mr. Mayor, I believe this was the report that was requested in terms of what the infrastructure developments were in Chippewa. So unless there's something additional that they want, I think this was the report that was to address that.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, well, you know, if there's flooding in the Chippewa area, we get the cause. And I think a couple of years ago, there's a lady on Front Street who was having a serious problem. Several people were involved. They took advantage of the program to put in a backflow valve, sump pump. She has been okay since then. The reason they do the pumping into the river when we have a heavy event is so there isn't any basement flooding. So if we're going to look at anything, let's find out how many basement flooding complaints we've had in the last couple of years to determine what this issue is all about. Because every time there is an issue, the people go out there, they put a backflow valve in, they put a sump pump, and they resolve the problem for that particular property. Now, I think I'm pretty astute when it comes to responding to complaints and problems, and I tell you, and I think our staff are reacting more quickly and know the exact time and where the pumping has to start to, to keep the water under control in the sewer system. And so unless I know that there are 20 people who are getting regular flooding out there, or 50 people, or whatever it is, then I don't really think we can discuss this issue until we, we have an appropriate report back to determine what's, what's it all about.
Did we have a, someone over here wanted to address this?
That's just what I thought we were supposed to do.
Yes, Counselor?
And that's what I'm asking for, is a report back on this, exploring the whole issue a little bit further. Because it's not just the basement flooding events that we're worried about, we're worried about the pumping events as well, and how many of those we've had the past couple of years. So it's not just how many basement flooding episodes we've had the past couple of years, but how many pumping events have we had as well?
So you asking for a report from staff to give us a...
Well, if you read your, you read your reports, all of the pumping events from 2009 up have all been outlined in the... been outlined in the report that we have in front of us, and so that has been documented. We know what the cost of the construction is going to be, $10 million over several years, and that's what has to be done with storage tanks. We studied all of that, we know what we have to do to resolve it, and the council has accepted that, and we're going to move ahead when funds are appropriate. So I'm okay with that, but I still would like to know how many people are experiencing flooding in the Chippewa area.
Okay, Counselor?
Okay, if we've read our reports, and we know that there have been a significant number of pumping events, I don't know if that's acceptable to the other members of council. All I know is that it's not acceptable to me.
When you say pumping, you mean surcharge into the tributary?
Yes.
Right. Heavy particulate into the tributary.
Yes.
Being the Chippewa.
Heavy particulate.
Yes.
Yes. And that is not acceptable. So rather than make an existing problem worse, let's deal with it and then bring the new development there online. Because if we do it backwards, those pumping events are only going to increase the number and volume.
And if we can maybe just get clarification from Kent, this new holding tank that we're putting in, will this address the surcharging, you know, into the creek? Will that help that during the wet weather events?
Yeah, the two pumps, the two tanks in combination will eliminate, or at least it's anticipated it'll eliminate the need for pumping up to a five-year intensive storm event, based on, based on the calculations that were brought forward by the consultants did the studies.
And that, and the first tank should be done by the early part of next year, is that what?
They're currently working on the design. This is being done in cooperation with the region of Niagara. They're actually leading it, because the tank's going to be constructed next to the existing old sewage pumping station on Front, on Chippewa Parkway. The design is anticipated to be completed around the end of, sorry, sometime in the fall. They're going to tender for construction late this year. Construction's going to start probably the beginning of next year, and it's anticipated it's going to take about 12 months to build it. So it'll be, that tank should be operational by the end of 2013.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Gates?
Same time as the road's going in the middle of the year. I like that, that's good. Listen, I, just to Counselor Wing's point, you're absolutely right, it is, it's 14 times that we've had this event happen, and I think that's unacceptable, I think it should be unacceptable to all the council, quite frankly, and to the residents of Niagara Falls. The second part of that question is, out of the $10 million that's been, that's going to have to be allocated to do this thing right, and hopefully alleviate the problem that we're in, is there any of that being paid out of development charges rather than just out of taxpayers' money? Seeing as there's been a lot of development in Chippewa.
Mr. Harrison?
Development charges are for growth and new development. I'd have to look at the development charges by law and the projects that were included. It sounds to me, and I'm not an engineer, so maybe Kent would be better suited to answer this, but it sounds like to me that a lot of the particulate is from existing homeowners and would not be from new growth and new development, so it wouldn't qualify for D C funding. But again, we'd have to wait and see, I'd have to confirm that, Counselor Gates, and determine that.
Thank you. Thank you. So now, so you're, you've got a motion, Counselor, could you just repeat the motion?
Yes, my motion was to get a report back from staff on answering the questions I've raised about whether or not we should have some sort of hold on further development in Chippewa until all these solutions have been implemented enough to increase the capacity of the system, which, as Counselor Gates has just pointed out, really isn't where it should be at quite yet. And, but I know there wasn't a second or because apparently some of my colleagues were of the impression that those questions would be answered in the report that's before us this evening.
And I didn't ask for a second yet, so we, so just for clarity then, you're looking at a report from staff questioning, well, first of all, maybe quantifying the amount of basement flooding that's taken place, and whether there should be a hold, is that what you're asking?
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't asking how much basement flooding or how much emergency pumping there's been. I was asking, should we proceed with any new development in Chippewa where that development will feed into this sewer system, which has some capacity challenges during wet weather events? Until we have both the current project and the one that's going to be included in the capital, 10-year capital needs budget, as well as enough of the extraneous flows addressed to build the system capacity to a point where we're not going to, by bringing new development on stream, increase the quantity and quality of the surcharging.
Okay, so there's a motion by Counselor Wing, asking staff to provide a report on basically the status of whether we can handle any more development or whether there should be a hold in Chippewa.
In a nutshell.
In a nutshell. And I'm sure Wordsmith will make that even nicer than I did. And that's, is that seconded by?
Counselor.
Yeah, okay, Counselor Morocco?
I understand where Counselor Wing is coming from to some point. I'm not sure that I'm looking to support a hold. Chippewa is actually basically the huge area of future development for bedroom community, and there's a lot of growth, I mean, just within a few minutes of my own property. There's a huge development of over probably 500 homes that have already been approved. I guess one question I have, that that type of development is going to already be taken care of with their, with the sewer plants that we have now, cannot be answered through you?
Kent, can you answer that question regarding the new big developments in Chippewa?
I believe that those portions of that development that have been approved, that that's been accounted for.
And that will not affect the flooding, that's a whole separate sewer system?
The development that's been allowed, that has been approved to go ahead has been, yeah, that's been accounted for and making up the capacity issues there.
Okay, I think that I don't mind supporting the fact that the existing properties that we're dealing with right now are my main concern. It's not so much in the way of future development, although it does have an impact in some areas where there's open lots, as we might have dealt with earlier. But I would like to maybe just help Counselor Wing in that effect to say that let's deal with what we have right now and the problems there, and let's see that we can actually fix those sewer problems with the proposed report that's here. And that will be addressed sooner than later, hopefully. I'm trying to get help at that point, sorry.
So are you, okay, so question, are you seconding her?
Yeah, I do not support seconding a hold on any development, because that basically is your hold entire. If it's just the area that actually is basically being addressed right now with the sewer problems because of that actually existing, so I think we need to maybe look in that area to just kind of make sure we address that, and if there's a certain, I guess, hold, or I hate to say hold, because.
Right. Yeah, and you know, maybe for clarity, I don't think the counselor's saying there should be hold, she's saying get a report from staff to determine if one's needed. So she just wants to basically know how many basement floodings have been taking place, right? To figure out whether staff's, what staff's recommendation is on development within Chippewa, is that what you're asking for?
Yes, it's staff report on that sewer system that is problematic. I don't know if the new areas that are slated for development are going to be on a different sewer system that won't be problematic. If they are, then obviously that doesn't factor into this. But the one that is problematic, I don't want to challenge it any further than it's already challenged. So that's what I'm looking for, is a report back from staff.
On the problematic area of the Chippewa sewer system.
I'll support that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion or a second or, Counselor Carrillo?
I can't support the motion, Your Worship, because I think it's an insult to the engineering department. I'm assuming that when they put something in front of us, that they're already, they've already looked at it, they're not going to put something in front of us and approve it that they think is going to cause more flooding in Chippewa. I'm assuming that, and maybe I get an answer, that the engineering department is not going to suggest something if they think it's going to add to the problem of flooding.
Mr. Mayor, we don't, we don't mind doing the report, but I think what the report identifies, there's already been a number of studies done. There's works in place, there's holding tanks that are going to be put in over the next several years. All of that is meant to address these problems, and the new development is a whole separate issue. But certainly if this council would like to report, we'd be happy to provide it.
Is there any other comments on the motion? Okay, so we'll call the vote for the motion, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, so it passes. Right? Okay, so we're just asking staff for a report back on that. Now we need to recommend, we need to move the report here, which is basically, it's just a report. Okay, moved by Counselor Wing, seconded by Counselor Morocco, all those in favor? Okay, it's passed. And then Counselor Peter Angelo, R N C 2012-15 Tourism Sports Policy.
Thanks, Your Worship, and I guess through you to Ms. Molenhauer, I just wanted to say, thanks for the report, thanks for making the changes, I think that they're great. The only question that I was going to ask is whether or not we could start the revised sports tourism policy effective January 1, 2012. And the reason is, I mean, I'd like to go into 2013 at least having an idea of how much money the council would have to budget in order for the sports tourism policy. If we leave it until 2013, we still have no idea really what the amount is going to be. So if we roll it back to 2012, then at least we'll have a full year by the time we do our budget next year to know how much money to put in there.
Ms. Molenhauer?
Threw it in the mayor. The reason we were recommending January 1, 2013 is one, we want a time to promote the changes to the policy. The second, today we have almost used half of the money, we actually have $9,000 committed, and we were definitely concerned about running low on funds if we do extend it to private organizations as well. I do like where you're coming from, though, the idea that this would give us the opportunity to really have a good idea how many private organizations would be applying for it, as well as the nonprofit. So my only concern would be that we may run out of funds, we may go over budget, and I could report back to council at that time.
But if you don't start, I mean, won't you be in the same situation come budget time in 2013?
Yes.
So you might as well get started now, so that you know what's going to happen next year. No?
Yes, yes, that's true.
Okay, well, Your Worship, in that case then, I mean, I would move the recommendation, and I would just change number two to January 1, 2012.
Okay, make a retroactive, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Is there any discussion, Counselor Gates?
Yeah, I'd actually like to compliment the Recreation Department as well. I think they've done a really good job on the sports tourism. I think the Recreation Committee has had a lot of dialogue around this over the last number of months. I'd like to compliment the committee on seeing that this is an opportunity for the city to really fill up a lot of our hotels in this community. We're hoping that maybe even on a go-forward basis, we could maybe even partner with some of the hotel owners as well. We think, last year, I think we have like $10,000 left. This year, we think we're actually going to run out of money, which I think is a good thing. And hopefully, on a go-forward basis, we can increase that so we can get more people come to Niagara Falls, more big tournaments. So I want to compliment the Recreation Committee, but I'd really like to compliment the Recreation Committee and staff. I think this is going to be a policy that's only going to get bigger and better for the city of Niagara Falls.
Now, while you're complimenting the Recreation Committee, aren't you on the committee too? Yeah, good news. That's good. Well, I had to get one good laugh tonight.
That's good.
All right, so that concludes the consent agenda, moving on to bylaws, Mr. Clerk? Any addition? Pardon me? Did we, a motion on?
We didn't, we didn't get the vote on the last one.
Oh, we didn't vote? Okay. That's right. Okay, we've got the motion moved and seconded, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Any additional bylaws or amendments, Mr. Clerk?
Just a slight amendment, it's noted in your additions under bylaw 2012-49, which is our fees and charges by law. There's a slight amendment to a fee related to the fire department on page 22. It's noted in your, in your additions, so we would be amending that bylaw accordingly.
Just before we get to Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, just a question on 52 and 53, Niagara Roller Girls and Eco Ninjas, any comment who they are?
Mr. Clerk?
I don't have the foggiest idea. The adopt a street program is administered through, through our Recreation and Culture Department. I don't know if Ms. Molenhauer knows who the groups are. I believe there is a roller girl, a roller skating.
Isn't there a roller derby team of?
Yeah.
Is that it, Ms. Molenhauer? So the Niagara Roller Girls are a roller derby team, and the Eco Ninjas, that's a group of what? Ninjas?
No, the, I believe they're also a roller, roller derby skating team as well.
Good. Excellent. All right. I need a motion, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Give the bylaws a first reading, all those in favor? Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Bylaws 2012-46 to 2012-55, read a first time.
Second and third.
Counselor Peter Angelo gives a motion for a second and third reading, and Counselor Maves, second. All those in favor? Okay?
Bylaws 2012-46 to 2012-55, read a second and third time and pass.
New business? Counselor Thompson?
I've been dealing with this for several years, but this keeps becoming a problem. Beth Van der Loos is a lady who has been corresponding with me for the last several years. There was also a substantial article in the paper with Tony Ricciuto six months ago, and it has to do with macular degeneration. And she's, I guess I can mention her age, she's 75 years old, she's still working as a secretary, and actually has to use sometimes a magnifying glass to keep working, to use her computer. She has got two deteriorating eyes, and she attends Dr. Ventruscan for Colburn, where she gets regular injections in the eyes with Lucentis. And she's been able to keep her sight as a result of that. And the government threw a resolution from this council several years ago, actually took on the responsibility of contributing to that very vital drug, which is about $2,000 a shot. Anyway, for some reason, the government has decided that they will only give this injection every 31 days. She must have it to keep her sight every three weeks. And the cost is prohibitive, she is going to go blind if this doesn't happen. And this is extremely alarming, because we had so much success through Kim Crater previously in getting coverage for this, and to think that this may only affect a handful of people and from three, from three weeks to 31 days, to keep somebody's sight, in my opinion, is ridiculous. And I suffer in the one eye with the same situation and have the same injections and know exactly what she's talking about. But she has it in both eyes and could be going blind as a result. I have a copy of the provincial answer, excuse me, where the premier, as the former opposition leader, was pointing to a lady in the, in the Queens Park, indicating, "Mrs. so-and-so up there is going blind because you will not cover the injections for, to the Harris government." And yet, here we are, seeing the same thing happening, where the possibility of this woman losing her sight and working at age 75 just to pay for these injections, kind of makes me sick. So I would make a resolution that we express to the government and the Minister of Health, the premier, and certainly Mr. Crater, that we suggest that this is unfair to restrict her to 31 days with these injections, and that somebody going blind is certainly going to need an awful lot of more care socially if she didn't get this. So this is extremely important to me, and I, I hope we can have some success, and I would so move.
Okay, we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco, Counselor Wing?
Yes, that's something that it seems to me the federal government has a vested interest in as well, as she mentions in her letter about. She mentions in her letter about if there's no coverage until after age 65, and a person at age 60 isn't covered at all. Well, the federal government has just extended the age at which they expect us to keep working for. So anybody who's under a certain age, you know, in their early 50s, has to now work an extra two or three years before they qualify for government pension. So if the federal government wants to see Canadians keep working longer, they're going to have to provide the funding to make sure that those Canadians are healthy enough and able to see and able to keep working those extra years. So this needs to be going to MP Rob Nicholson's office as well, because the federal government has a very vested interest in supporting this.
Absolutely. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I agree, and hopefully you could also include, there's a gap there. If somebody has macular degeneration at age 60, they're not covered until 65. It's ridiculous. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Any other discussion? So we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? Any other new business? Counselor Morocco?
Two things. First of all, I'd like to wish my mother a happy birthday today. And second of all, I had the great pleasure of playing with some of the young women in the CN Canadian Women's Tour yesterday at Legends. And I just wanted to say that, I didn't really know too much about that it was going on here. When I got there, I have to say that they're from all over Canada. The young lady that I played with, Curvy Dara, her from B.C., and she was just thrilled to be here in Niagara Falls and truly loved it. And I just want to say that I wish them all the best. And I also thank CN for sponsoring the Women's, Canadian Women's Tour. And actually, today and tomorrow, there'll be 83 competitors that will go on, I guess on the, the winners go to, I think there's two people, and I'm sorry, I'm not too sure, they just gave me some quick notes, in August to Quingam, B.C., to compete as well. So I just want to say that we wish them all the best and welcome to our city.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. That was it? Just, you had two things or just the one?
No, just my mom's birthday.
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah, that's great. Happy birthday to your mom. Any other new business? Counselor Maves?
Jury.
Moved by Counselor Maves for jury, and seconded by Counselor Carrillo.